Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the June 16th, 2025 School Committee Meeting to order. The first item we have for business tonight is approval of minutes, which is...
Do you want to read the statement about remote?
Do we have school committee members?
No, but you still have to say that the meeting's being held remotely and/or in person.
Don't we always read that? Any of that reading?
Yep.
I love how Michelle looks to us.
It's our first meeting.
Trust me.
We've only been doing this for five years. Okay. This meeting is being held remotely or as in-person or as alter means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all other communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law. Chapter 30A, Section 20 asks that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting other than Arba Media? Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. So moving on to our first order of business, which is approval of minutes. We have minutes from June 2nd, 2025.
And I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting of June 2nd.
Actually, we're going to table these.
Yes. As the original agenda. I do not have June 2nd, so I did not put them in the folder.
Oh, okay. We're going to table it. Okay. Moving on to Item 3, which is questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. This is the portion of the meeting that we have set aside to take questions and comments on items that are unrelated to items on our agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or online with a question or comment? If so, please raise your hand, and I will be happy to recognize you. No one? Okay. Thank you. We will move on to Item 4, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Perfect. Well, June is the time of the year when I run out of colors from my color-coded calendar. The last several weeks have been a flurry of year-end activities, and I had the pleasure of attending many of them. So in addition, of course, to the 2025 graduation ceremonies, we had pre-K graduation, field days, field trips, award nights, banquets, final concerts, and retirement celebrations. So many thanks to all who collaborated to plan these special events to celebrate our students and staff and build a sense of community. Wanted to share my congratulations to two high school students, Sachi Menon and Kate Crispie, who won first and second place respectively in the America's Field Trip Contest sponsored by America 250, a nonprofit organization that supports the Congressional U.S. Semi-Quintennial, I had to practice that, Commission. So Sachi and Kate wrote winning essays answering the question, "What does America mean to you?" So congratulations to Sachi and Kate. Last week, I was honored to be a guest of students of our HMS Comprehensive Learning Center who led a rigorous debate on the topic of school start times. This coming week, I'm looking forward to visiting the middle school to observe the final presentation for our eighth graders and for their civics projects. I personally fielded some terrific questions from students about roofs and climate control at the high school, questions about our practices for adopting new curriculum, and queries about our district's technology policies. And I wanted to acknowledge the School Committee's support as well. I know many of you similarly fielded questions from our curious eighth-grade students. And so grateful to all the community members who took the time to answer students' questions and respond to emails in support of these projects. Our spring athletics season is now officially in the rearview mirror, and wanted to say a special congratulations to the high school girls' tennis on a terrific showing during the state tournament. They made it to the semifinals against Long Meadow. Hingham Boys tennis had a similarly strong tournament run facing Westboro in their final match. Hingham Girls Lacrosse had a strong showing against North Hampton in the Final 16, as did the Boys Lacrosse team in the Elite Eight against Mansfield. And as we have said before, we are, of course, very thrilled to share the successes of students on the field, but what we're most proud of is the participation rate in athletics and the opportunity for students to build that community and connection. And then wanted to share with this committee, if you are around on Saturday evening at 6:00 PM, we are celebrating our first-ever alumni band concert in honor of Band Director Mr. Sincauda's 20th year in the district. Over 60 band student alumni are returning to Hingham for this event from Mr. Sincauda's very first year and as at least one representative from each of the classes that he's taught. So it'll be a terrific way to conclude a successful season of fine arts performances. So hope to see you there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to Communications or Communications received by the Superintendent. Student, no more student? Our student has graduated?
Our student is graduating.
We do, not yet. We don't.
Actually, we do.
We do?
Yes. Sorry.
Drum roll.
Yes, drum roll. I don't want to get her name wrong. It's Ariana.
Ariana Snood?
Yes, Ariana Snood. Yes, thank you. I didn't want to get her last name wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, great. So she will be our rep for starting next year.
Excellent. All right. 5.3, which is Other Communications. As Katie mentioned, I just want to let the public know as well that, again, the School Committee has been receiving many emails from the eighth-grade Hingham Middle School, the Generation Citizen Projects. School Committee, we've gotten particular emails about lack of AC at the high school. That's, oh, I believe this is the third year we've gotten that topic. It seems to be a hot topic, no pun intended. Advocating for mental health issues from students. We've been receiving emails about reducing bus transportation costs. Students have had some really creative and thoughtful ideas, and I really applaud their advocacy. It's been really great. The emails are always so well thought out. It's really fun. I really enjoy this time of year.
Agreed.
All right. Moving on to Item 6, which is unfinished business. I put in the packet. It's to review the 2025 School Committee Liaison Assignments, not to be confused with the school liaison assignments that we did a couple of weeks ago. I did put it in the folder earlier today. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments, issues. Looks good to everyone? Okay. Do you want to motion to approve them? Yes, we do need a motion, given that we have the wellness on there, and that is required by Mass General Law, that we have that.
Is the MSC delegate that, as soon as Carrie is going to the conference, will...
She volunteered. I have in writing that she volunteered for that role, so she is all set for that.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yes, thank you to her.
All right. I will make a motion to accept the Hingham School Committee 2025 through 2026 school year liaison positions, including the HBS Wellness Committee, which will be liaised by Jen Benham.
I will second. Okay. Any more discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Nope. All right. Moving on to new business items, and we're going to see if we can move a few things up this evening. We have, the committee is okay. We could do 7.2 first, which is a strategic plan, and then go to 7.5, which is to review proposed updates, and then go back to 7.1. Everyone is okay with that?
Yep.
All right.
Terrific. Thank you, and thank you, Sheri. I'll pull up just a couple of slides to provide an overview to our strategic planning process. So this evening, I'm bringing forth to the committee a draft strategic plan that represents several months' worth of efforts of a really terrific strategic planning committee that was representative of administrators, of educators, students, community members, and school committee members. And this group, we spent six sessions together and roughly 12 to 15 hours together hammering out our proposed strategic plan for the '25-'28 school year. I will say that the group was very collegial, very thoughtful. We had some really rich discussion. And wanted to remind the committee that this year, while our approach to strategic planning was similar to past years, we did take an initial first step this time around, which was to begin by developing our Portrait of a Learner to ensure that all of our future strategic planning activities would be student-centered. And so for those in the community who have not seen our past strategic plan, this is a simplified, single-page overview of our 2022 to 2025 strategic plan that provides just a high-level overview of our mission, vision, core values, and the five spokes of our strategic objectives. You would imagine that in a community, the mission, vision, and core values, because they are core, should look reasonably similar from strategic plan to strategic plan. But our committee did make a few suggested edits and tweaks to language to hopefully capture where our district is currently at the moment. And so if you could proceed, sorry, to the next slide. And again, a reminder that earlier this winter, I presented the final product of our Portrait of a Learner that served as a starting point for our Strategic Planning Committee, making sure that all of the resources and initiatives that we were proposing in our strategic plan aligned to support the development of these skills and competencies in our learners. So as you can see, this was a very robust committee with a lot of representation and a great cross-section. Many members of the committee wore more than one hat. We had some educators who were also families of Hingham students. We had, again, a really wide range of staff from K to, pre-K to 12, various disciplines. So we made sure that we had as representative of voices as we could. And so again, the first thing that we did is we took a look at our previous mission and vision and did find that our prior mission and vision, much of it still held true for our district, but we did make just a few tweaks to the language of our prior mission and vision. So our mission, as proposed for the '25-'28 school year, is that together we will cultivate an innovative, inclusive, and equitable learning environment while supporting each student's academic, social, and emotional growth. And our vision is that all students will embark on a lifelong learning journey to flourish with empathy and confidence and to improve themselves, their community, and their world. So again, a lot of similar themes and phrasing from our prior mission and vision, but the team felt that this, these few small tweaks here helped us to really align to where we are now as a district. And then again, our core values, we really tried to root in that Portrait of a Learner. And so in addition to being student-centered in our practices and developing that sense of inclusivity and belonging, we do want to make sure that we're centering those skills and competencies that our learners will achieve during their time in the Hingham Public Schools. So Sheri is now going to switch over to the actual document, which is fairly dense. Wanted to begin with the slides to provide the overview of the vision and mission, and will now scroll down to the actual focus areas of initiatives and action steps. And this next part, the initiatives and action step development, was a conversation between the Strategic Planning Committee and the leadership team, who will actually be the ones implementing many of these spokes. And so the two groups, we went back and forth between the two groups, and the actual initiatives have staff members aligned to them. And so we did give them a chance to take a look at some of the initiatives being proposed so they would have some input. So I don't like to name anyone in an initiative or action step. They don't also have a chance to take a look at it. If you could scroll down one more. I'm sorry. Perfect. So as we did in our last strategic plan, we have one, our first focus area is around having a culture of collaboration and community partnerships. And I do think that this will be an evergreen goal for us in every strategic plan from now until we all retire. And so the first initiative around that is to continue to build on some of the great work that's been done in the district to improve our communications. And so I do think we have made a number of changes over the last three years, implementing some new communication tools, a new website. And so at this point, we think we would like to take a snapshot of the initiatives that we have completed and see what additional tweaks and refinements we can make to that. And we do recognize that families are busy. They are overwhelmed with information. And so I think part of our job is to make the information as easy as possible to access and to find the right grain size in our newsletters and so on, so people are getting the information that they need in a succinct and digestible manner. And so we will have some action steps developed around that. We are hoping to expand our programming and workshops for parents and caregivers to really increase that partnership. This year, we did have several very well-attended programs for community members. SEL seems to be one area of particular interest to the community. Some of the other programs that we offered were not quite as well-attended, but still had enormous impact on the families that did attend. And so just trying to figure out the topics of interest, the format that works best for various topics, and so the community can anticipate a survey coming out about that and looking to partner with other districts to offer some programming and also consider tapping some of our community partners for some of that parent programming. In addition to that, back on Focus Area 1, is just thinking about some of the other ways that we can leverage our community partners. We're very grateful to have people who are very generous with their time and their talent, and so looking to support, whether that be the Portrait of a Learner competencies, thinking of ways to expand our students' world by really seeing what some of our community members do in their careers, think about volunteer opportunities, opportunities for students in our post-grad program to be out in the community, and so a number of initiatives there. Our next major area of focus, if you could go back one, Sheri, thank you, is around innovative and responsive teaching and learning. And so our last strategic plan for 2022 to 2025 was all about literacy. Our '25 to '28 curriculum, we're going to see a shift in focus to mathematics, and we've already shared with the committee some of the initiatives that we have underway from building-thinking classrooms to our elementary math pilot taking place. And a big overarching umbrella for our curriculum initiatives will be to align our work to the Portrait of a Learner skills and competencies. We will, in a collaborative way, begin to explore some of our pre-K to 12 schedules. So as you know, as a committee, you're very familiar with some of the scheduling work that we did around elementary MTSS. And so we do need to take a look at our secondary schedules, which are a bit tougher nut to crack when it comes to carving out the time for some of the interventions that we'd like to see there. And while we have our eyes on the schedules, we'll be taking a look at it from a number of different angles as well. Some of this work had started pre-COVID. We kind of lost the momentum on taking a look at schedules, and so we will be reconvening a task force to take a look at schedules at different levels. And for me in particular, again, that MTSS piece is at the secondary level, something that we would really like to take a look at. This next bullet point is, back one, Sheri, thank you, is another evergreen goal, and that is to continue to align and strengthen our special education programming and student services. So I will say that each of the bullet points is not necessarily equally weighted. This one is a very weighty bullet point here. And later this evening, you'll hear a bit of an update from Dr. Cattaldo about some progress that she has made during her tenure here, and then we will be looking forward to welcoming Dr. Panerisi, who is already hitting the ground running and has many great ideas to expand on the strengthening of student services and special education. Our next focus area is on healthy, equitable, and inclusive environments. And as we've shared in past School Committee meetings, our focused efforts to address academic and multi-tiered systems of support, those efforts and systems and schedules and staffing have really paid off in what we're seeing in our academic data. We continue, though, to focus on SEL data and social-emotional learning data. And so we will be, over the course of the next three years, really looking deeply at our social-emotional curriculum. And Erica Pollard, our Assistant Superintendent, is already working closely with our counseling staff and educators on some initiatives, including one at the middle school that we're particularly excited about that we'll be rolling out to you at a future meeting. We will be looking, as part of our wellness lens, also be looking at our approach to technology integration. And so this will really be looking at purposeful use of technology with an eye to screen time. So we are very mindful, particularly at the elementary level, that some of the initiatives that we have rolled out have been screen-intensive. So iRandy, for example, is something that's screen-intensive. So now that we're about three years into that initiative, looking to balance that and find the sweet spot. And when we are choosing curriculum, we are prioritizing that hands-on kinesthetic piece. So the math pilot, for example, that we'll be rolling out for elementary mathematics is much more of a kinesthetic and less digital program. And so we'll be looking to weigh and balance that. And we will additionally be looking to support families in helping their students to use technology in a balanced and an appropriate way, thinking about not only the screen-time piece, but also that digital citizenship piece, looking to continue to bolster our curriculum and programming around that. And then finally, we will continue to provide opportunities to students to learn about future technologies, including AI. And again, Erica Pollard and the curriculum directors are working to roll out some additional curriculum and materials in addition to the lessons that we already have. Next up, we will be taking a look at our enrollment trends, and I did share with the committee earlier this year, the NSDEC enrollment study that we did. We're seeing certainly an uptick in elementary enrollment, but we do also want to be the school of choice for our secondary students, and so we'll be digging into some of the reasons that families might choose private school over the public schools and have a few ideas in mind in addition to conducting surveys and doing exit interviews. We also wanted to message all of the terrific work going on in the district and starting that younger-than-eighth grade. We're finding that by eighth grade, families considering private school generally have already made their decision, and so thinking how we can roll that back to younger audiences so people are fully aware of the terrific offerings that we have at the middle school and high school and really highlight the successes of our students. Next up, we have Focus Area Number 4, which is Capital and Finance. And so this will involve not only our own staff within the Hingham Public Schools and the School Committee, but this also will involve partnership with the town side. And so one initiative, of course, is to implement our five-year capital plan and operational master plan. And as part of that, we do want to make sure that we're doing a really good job of messaging to all of our stakeholders the needs of the district, hope to help families in particular really deeply understand our budget and do a good job of messaging that and continuing to work on our strong partnership with the Advisory Committee and Select Board as we look at our capital expenses and operating expenses. We'll work with the Sustainable Budget Task Force, advocate for district needs, including equitable wages and benefits, and explore revenue sources. This is one of Ayesha's favorite parts of the initiative. She's always looking for new revenue sources, and so she's come up with some creative ones and look forward to see what she comes up with next. We'll continue to look at ways to collaborate with surrounding communities. So we started those conversations this year. I did some networking through my superintendent group, Dr. Cattaldo, through her Special Education Director Group, and Ayesha through her Business Director Group, looking at ways that we can partner on special education programming. We've discussed before how challenging it is to build programs in districts because of uneven cohort sizes, and so if we can partner with other districts, that is one way to address the uneven cohorts that we experience when we're trying to build programming in-house. Taking a look at special ed transportation. So if we are running a bus, for example, to Landmark and Cohasset also has a student going to Landmark, can we consider partnering on transportation? Also, under the area of Capital and Finance, we will be looking at professional development as well as an area that we can potentially partner with other districts. So some of the presenters that we had this year, like Jessica Minahan or Lynn Lyons, are very costly, so if we could share some of that cost with other districts, that was another area to take a look at. And then finally, really using the program review cycle as an opportunity to not only look at things like curriculum and programming, but also to look deeply at the budget needs of individual departments. And then last but not least, Focus Area 5, we have our Human Resources and Leadership. And so Marion Foley and her team have been hard at work on implementing a number of efficiencies to HR. So we'll be looking this summer to redesign our HR webpage to ensure that we have all of the resources at staff fingertips. We'll be looking to upgrade our employee self-service portal, again, with an eye to having information very readily accessible. We've discussed strengthening HR and payroll functions and have a number of initiatives mostly involving digitizing our processes. We are drowning in paper, and so hoping that digitizing some of our processes will help with strengthening those HR and payroll functions. Looking at continued eye on recruitment and retention of staff. So Mary Ann continues to develop hiring fairs, looking to develop partnerships with universities, creating a student-teacher pipeline and other university partnerships. And then last up is, in addition to looking at recruitment of our educators and staff, also looking at developing pathways for leadership development. And when I use the term leader, I don't necessarily always mean administrator, but even developing teacher leaders. We have some very experienced educators whose leadership that we can tap, even if they're not interested in taking that step into the administrator role. So thinking of ways that we can highlight and showcase some of those strengths that we have in the district. And then Carrie is not here to, yes, this evening. She always is the one that makes sure that I don't swim in a sea of alphabet soup, and I know Michelle also shares that.
I don't, Jennifer requested it last time.
Yes. And so I did include just an acronym glossary for anyone who is not as familiar with the lingo, so they have a sense of some of the acronyms that we use.
Right. Okay.
Well, first, thank you. I know how much work this is, and it's nice to see such an evolution from the last...
Speak into the mic, please.
See an evolution from last year, or last plan to this plan. I know we've all seen the prior plan, but for everyone else listening, or just, you know, to kind of highlight, can you talk about if there were specific things from the last plan that didn't get completed and either got rolled into this plan or that were felt they were no longer necessary because of where the district was?
Yes. I would say, for our last plan... Yeah, so I would say for our last plan, the area that we can be most proud of is MTSS. So we had a laser-like focus the last three years on MTSS and again, on academic MTSS and with a particular focus on elementary. And all of those action items were complete. And we have some really strong data. I'm very looking forward to sharing with you our end-of-year MTSS data, which was incredibly strong. And so we'll be sharing that later this month. I would say that in the last plan, there are just some evergreen goals that you're never done. So communication, you're never done improving and refining. Budgets, you are never done refining and adapting to the changing landscape. But I'd say that of our last strategic plan, we, again, can be very proud of all of the work on MTSS. I would say the piece that we did not have as much focus on is the secondary MTSS. So you saw those goals continuing. And the SEL, social emotional piece, is a part that we made some progress on, but really need to have continued focus on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Does anyone have any more questions? Carrie and I had the privilege of serving on the future plans. I'm gonna have... Does anyone else have any other questions?
I appreciate the focus on innovative learning and really sort of having a... It seems like there's a stronger academic focus than there was in the last strategic plan explicitly. So I appreciate the addition of that. I think that was one of the critiques that we had when the last strategic plan was presented.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Or thanks, Tim, for that.
I had one question, just because we've talked about it a few times about... And I love that it's a focus of yours and the district's of trying to work, partner with other communities to support students and find ways to collaborate on programming. Does DUC provide any support, guidance, like a best practice? And who do we talk to to make them... I'm just thinking, like, it just seems...
In terms of transportation, they actually have, like, a website of kids for special ed and what schools they go to.
Yep.
It's a tool that they developed that we can use to, like, figure out if you have kids going to a certain location, how you can get there.
Okay.
In terms of that.
Yep.
But besides that tool for transportation, I don't know that... In terms of, like, for special ed or anything like that, there isn't, like, specifically in terms of that, yeah.
I would say in terms of existing partnerships, Metco has done a terrific job of connecting districts. And so their whole Metco 2.0 initiative was a professional development initiative that brought districts together. And there was a lot of opportunity for sharing best practices. But I would say, other than that, it's more organic partnerships. So I'm in a superintendent cohort with some of the area superintendents. And so we've begun some conversations on ways that we can partner.
Yeah, I mean, it's great. I just, I'm just thinking it through. It does sort of feel like that's something that DUC should be sort of focusing on, right? There's, we know that the needs of special education students have increased and there are more students requiring those services. And but to your point, have too small of a cohort to start a program. And it seems like there should be some sort of way to model, you know, this district has this program they could offer to your district that doesn't and only has two students that would need it, so... But...
So for example, if we had a therapeutic program, just to think of a random example.
Yes.
Just off the top of your head.
You know, at some, at some point, if that takes off, we may be able to share that program with other districts.
Right.
Yeah, I will say they have been better. DUC has been better at giving us more up-to-date data, especially with the special education schools and the cohorts that are for each district. It used to only be two to three years old of data, and it's been more current, at least within the last year. So I think people can at least use those resources to use. I think that's helpful.
Yes. Two quick questions. One is, I think I ask this every time. What was the initiative that didn't quite make it? Because you've got to prioritize. Like, what was, you know, something you talked about that, you know, we just didn't prioritize against all these other important initiatives? Was there anything?
Yeah, so I do think that, given that this was a continuation of a conversation, I do think that the last strategic plan to this one, the second plan kind of wrote itself in that there's, the two, two plans really spoke to each other. So there's nothing really, like, leaping to mind. We, I think we were really clear in our big rocks. And there will always be the smaller rocks and the unplanned, whether that be unplanned DUC mandates, that is new. But I do think this pretty fairly captures where we're at right now. And the road was kind of clear based on our last plan.
Yep. Okay, that makes sense. My second question is, so hopefully you'll be here for five of these, right? Something like that. I don't know how many, but a long time. Did you guys talk at all about looking out that far ahead? Not at the initiative level, but like, maybe you've already somewhat answered this. But you anticipate having five strategic plans that... I don't want to use the term incremental, because I agree. I like the evolved, how this has evolved. I think they are the right initiative, right initiatives, the right main goals. But it is, it is, I guess, incremental. I don't mean that negatively. Did you talk at all about, like, longer, you know, 15 years from now, what do we want to be as a district? And does this set the stage to get us to whatever that goal is?
Yeah, so interestingly, we work, the group we work with, they're called Teaching and Learning Alliance. So they do this. This is what they do. And they work with various districts. And almost every, and they do tend to partner with districts over multiple years. So we've now used them for a few strategic plan. And they said almost every district who was previously setting five-year plans is now setting three years, because that's the visibility we have. And particularly at this moment in time with so much financial uncertainty and the rapid pace of evolution, whether it be AI or, you know, everything about the educational landscape. So we're finding that we have pretty good visibility over three years. And, you know, we could make different decisions at the end of these three years if we're in a place where it might make sense at that time to write five years. But I think, given some of the big existential uncertainties around whether it be federal funding, whether it be whatnot, I think this is a good grain size for us right now. And from what I'm seeing from other districts, so part of our research was to look at strategic plans from other districts. And almost everybody is writing a three-year plan right now, even districts that previously wrote five, so...
Some four.
Some four. Some had four. Some had four. Yep.
Thank you.
Audience, Jaclyn?
Hi, Jaclyn Bopray, president of the Hingham Education Association. I just wanted to thank everyone involved in that process. It was a lot of meetings and a lot of time and a lot of good discussion. So felt, felt really productive. I wanted to just raise my concern that this overlaps with our next bargaining cycle. And we are really facing some tough challenges, meaning a living wage. Our current teachers now are not starting at a living wage. In Norfolk County, it's like $61,000... No, sorry. Plymouth County, $61,000, Norfolk County, $70,000. And the living wage does not include student loans, which teachers have to have a degree. And after five years, typically, we have to have a master's on top of that. So adding on the usual 4K, 5K of student loans, we're already below it for our starting staff. And we already know about some of our other units. So I'm worried, and I want to flag it to you all. You need to start thinking now about how we're going to be dealing with that, because negotiations for that starts in a year. So it's like, shockingly soon. And our custodians and food service workers are this, this summer, basically. So worried about that. Yeah, I think that's it.
Thanks. Thank you. Open up. Is there anybody who is online that has any questions? Feel free to raise your hand, and we will happy to answer a question. Or listen to your question. Hopefully try to answer it. I don't see anyone else. Do you have another question, Jaclyn? Go ahead.
One more thing. I just remembered.
I don't see anyone else online, so go ahead.
Benefits was also on there. I'd like you all to be thinking about how you're going to advocate for health insurance splits as well, since, yeah, that's an now problem.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question in the audience? I thought you were raising your hand. I'm sorry. Can't see it on the end of the table there. All right.
And so we just wanted to share where we head next for this. So once the school committee votes on this document, we'll then send this out to a graphic designer who will create a dashboard for us and also create a document very similar to what we had previously. So this is, again, just in draft form.
So we will... What's your timeline to want to get that out to the printer?
Yes, so it takes about six to eight weeks, closer to eight weeks. And would love to have this in time for our leadership meetings in mid-August. But we can certainly delay that. Again, I have the draft to work from. And so I'd say for our leadership team, they can work off the draft. And then would love to be able to push this out to the community at the start of the year.
Okay. So I don't think we can vote on it tonight.
That's fine.
We don't have to act as appropriate.
Sure.
But I was thinking if we're having a meeting Monday? Possibly, if we possibly have a meeting or whatever.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, there's not a huge rush. So again, when I met with the graphic designer, I suggested we could have it by mid-August for our leadership meetings. But absolutely fine if it's closer to the start of the school year. So absolutely fine.
Right. Great. All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on. As we discussed earlier, we're gonna move to 7.5, which is to review the proposed updates to the town's financial policy. In your packet, you will notice that we have put the town advisory committee has, as they do every three years, they update their financial policy. And they have given a copy to us to review and just to kind of have the opportunity to ask questions. And they have, two members have come here tonight to join us if there's anyone here that has any questions, to be here to answer them for us. So grateful of them to be here. I know Carrie Nee had had some questions. And because she knew she wasn't going to be here, she did send those questions over to Carol. And I was copying on the email. So I'm happy to share with the committee what those questions were so we can, okay, so I was curious to have them have the same questions. I think... Start with questions. I don't have any to start with or comments.
Just if you look at the first highlight under financial policy, the insurance, ensuring the continuous delivery of town services at a level that's consistent with the reasonable needs and expectation of its citizens. I think the largest, certainly with the schools, the largest expense of that is staffing. And I think we, you know, just highlighting what Jaclyn was saying, I think we need to think about the insurance split and the sort of the, how we pay staff. I think that's the biggest financial concern that school committee is dealing with.
I mean, just to remind, this is not the school committee's document. It's the advisory committee's document.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting to change.
Oh, no, I was just saying.
How I envision continuing town services is looking at how we pay and benefit staff.
Yes.
The work for the town.
Yes. And one of the things that was brought up under financial management before was number two. There was a suggestion made to change, possibly add municipal to the first line, given that the school committee has the authority to allocate appropriations. You know, the Mass General law for months... The law allows the school committee to make allocations. And we would just, had suggested that they make that change to municipal. And I believe that they are taking that into consideration and are making that change. So appreciate that. Michelle, do you have a question?
I do. I just, I just wanted to try to get a little clarification on this because I feel like I've heard it talked about a little bit. So in the section under the, where we're talking about the MOU, and it's saying the town should consider extending the MOU beyond 2028. And there's more language in there. But is that just to keep us within... Because I think there's some confusion about when the current one expires and when, if we go into another override situation, a new one would be. So is that what this is meant to indicate? That we should just make sure that the language in the MOU and the town's policy get us to the position that we want to be in for the next override?
I think that's put well. I think, I think the goal that we're putting on there is to... Thank you.
I think that puts it well. What the goal really there is, is whether it's rewriting, revisiting, you know, the current MOU covers through the budget of 28. And, and it's just, you know, that's going to be, wait a minute. We just did 26. 27 we're doing this year, next year's, you know, so we have another year left.
Yep.
And it's when do we start talking about it and thinking about what we want to have in place as a plan for financial responsibility going forward? That's, I think it's as simple as that, that we found it was helpful to have the MOU. And we think from the town would find it helpful to have some level of commitment, especially with the challenges we're going to have coming forward. So that's really what it's, it's designed to do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep, and we didn't have the MOU the, when they, the, the last time when you wrote the last document, three years ago, we didn't have the MOU too. So that language is added into it as well.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Any questions about the shoulds or shalls? I do not have any questions about the shoulds or shalls. I'm just gonna clarify, no one has any questions in the committee? All right. Anyone in the audience? Jaclyn, do you have a question?
So actually, I don't know. Jaclyn Bopray, Hingham Education Association president. I don't know, maybe this is a question. But I am concerned that this means you're saying you're committing to continuing to have no overrides?
Nope.
Okay. Can you, okay, can you clarify that? Because people are very concerned about that.
How are you reading it that it says that?
Because the original MOU said if, you know, we, once we have this one override, we are going to stick to 3.5% increase and commit to not having an override.
For those three years.
For those three years. Okay. So when you say extending the terms beyond 2028, you're not extending that term?
Whatever appropriate adjustments are made also says that. So that's, that's the...
Okay.
Is with appropriate adjustments, which would include...
So you're thinking having that, you know, 3.5% annual growth cap, but an override if needed?
Not even saying it would be 3.5. We're saying we should discuss what a financial plan will be.
Okay. Okay. Got it. I think that will help answer a lot of questions for folks. I think it's very important to, as, don't want to use the O-word, but like, we, we might, many, I know many, but years down the road, we're facing that, like all the towns around us are. So promising to people that we won't have one is probably not a realistic or a good promise at this point, given the amount of, of change we're going to need to see in wages and benefits and everything else. I strongly don't think we should be promising anyone that...
And I don't think anyone, I'm not reading that in this document as that's saying that. And I think we just got clarification from advisor that that is not their intention to say that.
Great. I'm, I'm also just concerned that the 3.5, and I hope it doesn't end up 3.5, like, the inflation that we've seen can't be addressed in 3.5. I'm glad it's higher than 2.5, but we're not going to be able to meet, like, a wage need for a lot of our staff if we're even going to limit ourselves to three and a half. And it seems like we, I don't, are there other towns doing this MOU? When I tell people about it, I get looks of why is the town limiting itself? Like, that seems like a bad idea. And it restricts you from being able to do what you need to, when you need to. So it just seems like the town is limiting itself and it doesn't need to do that, so...
The, the language says 3.5 trits the next year while we're under the current MOU.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's adding, because it was, like I said earlier, it's adding in what wasn't there before.
Okay. Cool.
And I think, and again, this is just the advisory... And I think, and again, this is just the advisory's financial document, they're putting in language from what was in there before. This is not, but there's no language to what you're insinuating in there.
Okay.
And I think that what I like about the language that's in here is that it says the town should consider extending. Like, it doesn't say we will, the policy has to be, if you're doing an override, you have to have a MOU. I think they're just saying that if we're going beyond 2028, we should consider it in conjunction with any other financial measures we're going to put in place to try to maintain all the things we're trying to maintain in here, good quality financial management, AAA bond rating, and taking care of municipal and school employees and people who work for the town. So I think that's a part that I do want to highlight, that it does say should consider it as part of any next move that the town makes.
Wondering if you could just grab the mic and clarify that for folks?
Sure. Yeah, it's not, the, the current MOU is, is not saying we're never going to have another override. I guess my personal comment to add to it is we've seen a lot of failed overrides. What we're looking to do here is put ourselves in a position that when the override is appropriate, it's a successful override. And we think, you know, demonstrating financial responsibility is part of what's going to get us there. So this is just as you put very well, Michelle. The point here is just to say we think the MOU was very helpful in that last override and we think continuing to have a dialogue with the town and a commitment to the town on how we're going to handle our finances is, is, is going to help us in the long run. Good?
Great, thank you very much, Carol. And anyone else have any more questions? Before we move on? Anyone online? Nope. All right. Very much appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Thank you very much. All right. We will move back to 7.1, which is to receive a special education update.
Yes, and Dr. Cattaldo sends her regrets this evening. So she had previously shared an update with the Special Education Subcommittee. And so tonight I was just going to give kind of a high-level overview of what was a more extensive conversation with Special Education Subcommittee. And in addition to sharing Dr. Cattaldo's notes on her progress to date, wanted to stress again that Dr. Panerisi has already been in district for four days, coming back again tomorrow. And she is very eager to share her entry plan with the committee once she has her feet under her later this summer. And so, Jerry, if you could pull up Dr. Cattaldo's slides? And for members of the community listening in, just wanted to share that we had commissioned a special education audit. And, and from that audit, Dr. Cattaldo and her team developed action steps to continue to improve and strengthen our special education programming. And she highlighted in this presentation here, four goals. The first goal that was set related to special education programming. And so Dr. Cattaldo and her team are in the process of developing exit and entrance criteria for special education programming. That project is nearly complete, but given that we do have a transition in leadership, we did want to include Dr. Panerisi in the final edits to those exit and entrance criteria. And so that is one of the first tasks that Dr. Panerisi will address once she's in district full-time, beginning in July. Dr. Cattaldo shared that there was great progress on the second bullet point under goal one, which was identifying transition activities for students and staff between preschool, elementary, middle, and high school, with some additional programming for students and also for parents and caregivers. She did make some great progress with her team on developing strategic partnership with various organizations to strengthen the curriculum and staff professional development. In particular, she highlighted our partnership with Landmark, and other organizations who have had a consult role in some of our programming, including our social collaborative, of course, with whom we have a strong partnership. Dr. Cattaldo and her team did audit available curriculum in each program and is also working with our curriculum directors on this project. And that there have been, particularly at the high school level, some recent changes to competency determinations as we want to make sure that we're positioning ourselves to ensure that students in some of our specialized programming are meeting curriculum standards according to the competency determinations, which is constantly evolving target.
While we're on the side, could I just clarify one point? The first bullet, first bullet point, that is not about criteria for entering or accessing special education services.
No, no.
Which is always up to a team meeting. This is about specific program, for example, the lab program that Hingham has. I just thought people might be confused about that, that we were establishing criteria for special education, which will, is not our role.
Thank you, that's a really important clarification. Thanks, Tim. Goal two, this goal here has an enormous amount of overlap with some of the messaging that we've done around some of our gen ed initiatives, including the D cap, which is a document that helps to serve all students in the general education setting. We've done not only an update and refresh of the D cap, but we've also done some professional development around this during staff meetings and department meetings. We have, as we've mentioned, really taken a deep dive into the elementary MTSS. And we are beginning to outline what MTSS might truly look like at the secondary level. We do have some limited secondary MTSS supports, but really looking to flesh those out further. And continuing our practices that are now, I would say, pretty deeply entrenched, we're three years in, to looking deeply at MTSS data, both academic and SEL as the interface between our general education MTSS and special education. And we continue to find coaching, both through some of our DESI academies and partnerships and other partners to enhance the implementation of MTSS, UDL, and SEL. Goal three, set by Dr. Cattaldo's team, centered around communication, collaboration, and relationships. And so Dr. Cattaldo met bi-monthly with team chairs to outline common procedures, scripts, and ensure compliance and supported the team chairs in sharing information and really working on, in tandem with that, communication with families. Dr. Cattaldo did update the special education handbook. However, Dr. Panerisi is also coming in with her special education handbook from her past work. And so some of the work this summer will be to marry those two documents and do yet another refresh of that handbook. We will continue to curate resources for families to support understanding of special education programs and students' needs and including making more materials accessible on the website. And then finally, Dr. Cattaldo shared some progress on professional development. One area that we're particularly proud of this year is for the first time, we did have a robust para educator professional development series that was focused on supporting the needs of students with disabilities. And we recently did a survey of all para educators to make sure that we are refining that approach and best meeting para educators' needs and to build our capacity to best support students. This year, for the first time, we also did an orientation for new para educators who onboarded in August. And we will continue that practice this coming year and also add some additional quarterly trainings for those who onboard after the beginning of the year. Dr. Cattaldo developed some other resources for para educators. And again, Dr. Panerisi will continue to bring in some resources from her past districts and continuing to support the implementation of the new IEP and sharing professional development, not only with special educators, but I do think we have some additional messaging to do with general educators of the new special education IEP templates. And reviewing the alignment of goals and objectives with progress monitoring data. Next slide, please. And in addition to meeting regularly with, with the team chairs, Dr. Cattaldo also, I think that one might be a duplicate. We already discussed that one. She did also met with the leadership team to make sure that they were up to date on all of the changes to the new IEP and to continue to review legal requirements and compliance. Building principles in particular are a big part of supervising special educators and making sure that they too are up to date on the current landscape. And then finally, continuing to support the strengthening of literacy practices through professional development on multi-sensory literacy and the PLC, just continue, professional learning communities continue to review literacy data. And so we're grateful to Dr. Cattaldo for her two interim years here in Hingham. Again, we made some progress under her tenure and we're looking forward to continuing the work under Dr. Panerisi.
Open up the questions for the community?
Actually, I was wondering if I could ask Jaclyn a question? I don't know if that's kosher, but since this is the first year of sort of the onboarding orientation and specific early release, professional development geared towards para educators, I was just wondering if you received any feedback about that? About whether... Okay.
I, I think it was a rough transition in leadership at the beginning of the year and maybe, I, I'm looking forward to better professional development for our para educators next year. I think we've had some good conversations between, you know, union leadership and Erica Pollard to think about what workshops we could offer next year and maybe bringing back, I think there was a program that, I want to say it was Jamie Beloit kind of had years ago, like in, kind of like what it means to be a para educator. Also, kind of just even just the job description of what a para educator does. We've worked with Mary Ann in HR to help outline that a little bit better. So I think we're really making some good steps. We didn't quite meet that goal this year, but I am optimistic about next year.
Excellent, thank you for the feedback.
I have a question. Sure. I have written down. How does the, my question is really to the audit of the curriculum and how that, how does that contribute to the... So the question, now that I'm reading it aloud, to the improving of the special program? How does that kind of work with the...
Yeah, in the same way, in the same way that we would refresh curriculum in the general education setting, make sure, making sure that we have the most up-to-date materials in, in the special education, in the special educator's hands, whether that be digital tools or other curriculum materials, so.
And this professional development goes along with that?
Yes.
Okay, you already answered all my other questions. Does anyone else have any questions? Yeah, okay.
One, oh, that's right, I forgot, you had specialty. One thing related to para educator professional development that I think was a really good change that we felt this year was the time during orientation for educators and special educators and para educators to kind of meet and talk to each other about students and, and their IEPs and how to best support them. And that half an hour a month to collaborate with, you know, the BCBA's and behavior tax and all that, that's, that's been appreciated as well, so.
Thank you.
I remember the question, because I asked, I asked this last year. Answer this, but what strategies are being used to enhance the communications and collaborations between the families? I don't know, I know it's something that was a goal that they were working on last year. Can you just talk about that?
Absolutely. So one of Dr. Panerisi's first, first introductions to the district was a, a community forum. So we did as part of her interview process, had a chance to meet with families. And so she's really looking forward to partnering with CPAC. And we, as part of that conversation that we had about collaborating with other districts, we do hope to collaborate with other CPACs to bring in bigger, more expensive programs through, through CPAC. And so thinking about that, that cost sharing, so we can bring in some additional programming is one important step. But we do meet with our CPAC board regularly and next year do hope to offer some additional programming to the broader CPAC community. And that is an evergreen goal and always a work in progress, so.
Always a very important goal. All right. Is there anyone online that has any questions? If you do, please feel free to raise your hand. We can... Nope, okay. All right, we are ready to move on to 7.3.
Okay.
Which is June 2025 enrollment update.
Yes, so we did an update enrollment and just wanted to explain to the community some of the factors that we have of how enrollment might fluctuate over the course of the year. One area of fluctuation is in our preschool students. So we onboard preschool students throughout the year as they turn three and become eligible for our preschool. So anyone in the committee who is comparing some of the numbers that we shared earlier in the year, you'll notice a pretty significant jump in those preschool numbers, which is typical. So as, again, students age in to our program, we do see an evolution in those preschool numbers over time. Similarly, in our post-grad program, as students turn 22, they age out of our program. And so we will anticipate seeing the, the post-grad numbers change over the course of the year. As for elementary, middle school, and high school, we do have families move in, buy a home in Hingham, sell a home in Hingham, and move out. And so we'll see minor variations in those numbers, but did want to just highlight the preschool and post-grad numbers are the areas that we see the most spring, swing from beginning to end of year.
Particularly the preschool as well. Just to add to Katie's point as well, where it's in our integrated preschool, where kids may be, we have to actually leave space for some of our kids with special needs. Because as they become tested throughout the year, even within our KIA, we may have kids that may be tested and may have to change in terms of going to the integrated programs, where their services can be provided in that program as well.
So you purposefully plan for that.
So I didn't realize it was kind of like a rolling mission.
It is, it is, yes.
Particularly for our special needs kids. You have to leave space for them because they have to provide the services to them.
Does anyone have any questions about the current enrollment data? In the audience, Jaclyn, do you have a question? Come to the mic, please.
Sorry, I seem to be up here a lot today. I'm, I'm getting questions from some of the elementary schools about how the numbers they're hearing about what the class sizes will be next year don't match these numbers.
Yep, so we have an additional agenda item for current, for the elementary. So may, perhaps we'll answer that question when we come to that agenda item.
Yeah, so that was the, the June snapshot of the actual children in the building as of June 1st, not projected enrollment for next year. So that's coming up next.
No? No? No, I was just going to say, but it's a net five increase in enrollment. Yes, which, yes. Okay. All right, so moving on to 7.4, which is to discuss the projected 2025 elementary enrollment.
Absolutely. And so our projected enrollment is always a bit of an imperfect crystal ball in that we start our registration process very early. So we have our kindergarten orientation way back in January. But any family who moves into Hingham after that point, we welcome them regardless of when they're moving into town. And this year in particular, we are seeing not only an influx of families into town, but some movement of families across the district. So a family of three might move, say, from the Foster District to the South District or the Plymouth River District to the East District. And so we are very closely monitoring the enrollment day to day. I'm having basically weekly check-ins with our principals, our elementary principals, because we do have a couple of uncomfortable points that we are very closely monitoring. And again, the challenge is, is that some of the factors are beyond our control in terms of real estate and families, again, moving in or moving in between schools across the district. And so we had maybe five or six sections that we've been very closely monitoring. And one of the sections that we had been monitoring tipped the balance. So grade one at East, as of today, has 73 students enrolled. So we had an influx of grade one students at East since the time we made our projections. And given that, any student over 69 will mean that we will not be able to maintain those, the class sizes of 23 that's prescribed for grade one. We are at this time recommending increasing our additional recommendation of three sections, which would now put us over the 23 limit. Increase that to four sections, which would bring those average class sizes back to 18.3.
For the grade one?
For East grade one. In order to do that in a budget neutral way and still maintain the school committee recommended class size of 25 in grade five, we propose a reduction of sections at South School from four to three. And that would still keep us below the 25 threshold for the school committee policy and still leave room for at least a couple of additional students. So if two additional students moved into South over the summer, we would still be meeting the 25 cap.
And that's for grade two itself?
That's for grade two itself. So that, that's our recommendation to the committee. But please also note that there are two other grade levels that we have been monitoring very closely. At one point, each of them have tipped, tipped over the balance. And, and due to movement, we are now at exactly 69 students in kindergarten for East School and for Foster School. So both of those kindergarten sections are currently at the limit of 23. And we did anticipate what we were calling the foster effect. And we have seen some of that in the new building. We've seen some, some students coming in. But East also has seen some recent move-ins to the district. And so again, we will continue to monitor those two classes in particular and continue to update the committee as we see this. Yep.
I'm wondering if it might make sense to, just as a question. I know the East District itself is very sort of strangely shaped. Sort of goes way up Lizelle Streets and all the way to Hull and all of that. I'm wondering if, not changing things for current students, but if we wanted to, if the East section is growing, if we wanted to maybe think about taking parts of sort of the Lizelle Street area and making that into a South, the South District or something like that? Just, I don't have a solution or a map. I'm just wondering if, for, for incoming students to think about districting.
I think redistricting is a, is a much bigger conversation. In that, you know, we're often finding, you would certainly wouldn't want to split up a family.
Of course.
And it may have some additional ramifications when it comes to transportation. We don't currently have, you know, a bus route. So I do think redistricting would be a much bigger, much bigger question. But appreciate any creative thinking.
Outside of the box for, if East is the district that's growing, it's such a, it's probably the most oddly shaped district.
Yeah, and it's uneven too. So I think, I think it's uneven. So we've had some upticks in other grade levels as well. Just happened to be East grade one, yeah, had a, had a particular pain point.
And I'm not even sure if we could even say it's necessarily growing, because it had a, had a big decline during COVID and after COVID. It didn't, I don't feel like it bounced back as much as the other, as like South did cohorts, like for second and third, so.
And, and South is really the school that way. We have four cohorts in every single class except second grade. So it's really the biggest school. It's really the biggest school. And, and East, we've actually had some reductions in class, in, in, in class, not class sizes, sorry, in the number of sections.
Enrollment.
Yeah. The other thing that will happen this summer is that we will continue to, we will continue to see kindergarten kids come in. There's no, as, as Katie mentioned, there's no definitive school that we know for sure that they'll come into. But every year, we know that we have an influx of kids coming through the summer, right? So we definitely have to come back again in terms of this, in terms of if we do have those two that we were watching, in terms of what would mean from a budgetary perspective as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this, I mean, because I don't see a lot more wiggle room in terms of.
East and Foster.
I don't see, yeah. I mean, this is a creative solution too for, for South. Because you're still staying within the policy of 20, up to 25 kids. But I don't see being able to do that, if keeping a budget, budget neutral.
We may have.
Obviously, we have to stay.
We'll continue to monitor and still, I mean, obviously, we still have to follow the school committee policy,
which is K through one, capped at 23, and two through five, capped at 25.
So is that, I, you're probably, I'm sure you're right on this, Jen. I just can't do the math as quickly as you. So are there any other, I'm not trying to change this option, but it sounds like we can sort of strongly assume that the two kindergartens are going to tip. If we typically have summer things that, you know, so highly likely or more than 50% chance that they tip. Are there, are there any other, and I understand things could change as well, but like as currently constituted, was there any other option other than this one or?
So one other point to note is that in order to shift someone to kindergarten, they have to have the appropriate licensure. And so it's not always that easy. So let's say, for example, we don't, but if we did have a fifth grade section, for example, we don't, that could, could be collapsed. We have kind of a licensing, licensing factor as well. So again, and any of the grade levels, those numbers could change. So a family of triplets moves in, a family of triplets moves out. We're with the growing enrollment, which is a great thing and something that we hope, hope will continue at, at the elementary. It just means that we'll have, you know, these uncomfortable, uncomfortable class sizes that we'll just have to continue to monitor. So as soon as we have more information, we'll share with the committee. But we, we will continue to monitor every grade level, K to five. And we'll come back to the, the committee as needed.
So if any kindergarteners are moving to town, we will guide them towards the beautiful houses in the Plymouth River District.
And South, yeah, I mean, I think, I just feel like this is, this is a much easier thing for us tonight to discuss because it is budget neutral.
It looks like maybe one other criteria, one other classroom. Again, I get you're gonna bump right up against it. There's maybe one other that if nothing changed, you could make a decision or maybe not because of what you just said, Katie. I don't know.
Yeah, so again, we'd have to, so this was a move that we could make that works for all, all the reasons. So we do have our eyes on some other possible solutions, but wouldn't want to speak prematurely until we have firm data. So, so this was a, a move that could be made meeting all of the policy licensure requirements and so on.
As the phrase says, cross that bridge.
I think though, on a positive note, when it comes to enrollment, there's some interesting trends here, right? So you're, you see a big increase from, like right now, we have 258 kindergarteners and we have 276 going into first grade. So there are a number of families coming to Hingham Public Schools that are currently enrolled in kindergarten but are coming for first grade. And then maybe look at grades like three, three and four in particular. I mean, 308, 285, I mean, that's, that's kind of where we had been. I mean, those were literally almost exactly like my kids' grades, classes. And 308 was like a little bit on the big side. So I mean, there's some green shoots in this data that the enrollment is, is increasing.
Enrollment data study was right.
Nasdaq was spot on, yeah.
Michelle, so that's a great point in that we typically, for kin, for first grade, we've always had a bump in first grade. Because a lot of kids, people don't send their kids in for kindergarten.
Right.
But they hold them back and then send them in first grade. Where some, some schools in town have a kindergarten but not a first grade. So they may extend kindergarten for their kids and then after send their kids in for first grade. So we've typically seen a bump there. This year it is a little bit bigger than usual.
Okay, yeah. It seems like it's bigger than usual, yeah.
But again, we're thrilled to have, have more students and excited to welcome them. And when they come, we will be ready.
Any more questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? Anyone online? Okay. All right, we need to vote on this?
Where it's budget neutral, technically not. If there was ever a change to the budget, we would need to.
We have one question. Lori, go right ahead. I'm just gonna unmute.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, Lori Lucas, 18 Harvest Lane. I just had a question about equity across the district. That is part of the contract as well. I know you guys are talking about class sizes and the caps. And I'm just wondering if you're also considering equity in the class sizes across the district? Because 18 and 23, although it may only seem as five, is a drastic difference at the kindergarten level. And think that that also needs to be considered.
I will, I will say thank you for that comment, Lori. The math does get challenging when you go from, from four to three. And in that, mathematically, the way, way things split out, it does get challenging with that. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at especially for grade two, like PRS. It's not, it's not the same, you have smaller class sizes at PRS. Fortunately.
But to, and to go to, from three to two gets even more challenging, yeah.
Go ahead. Do you have a follow-up question, Lori?
Sorry, I do. I just, also just the consideration of the actual physical class size of the classrooms, that I know they're very different at all of those buildings and that I think the physical space also needs to be taken into consideration.
All right, that's a good point. Thank you. Any else have questions?
Again, we'll just continue to keep you apprised. And again, if there's anything, particularly with any budget impact, we'll make sure to bring that to the school committee in a timely manner. But where this is budget neutral, I don't believe the committee needs to vote.
Okay. All right, I'm just looking at this. All right. We are on, sorry, we've changed the agenda somewhere around him. Losing track of where we are.
KIA.
KIA, which is 7.6, which is to discuss KIA guidelines and pay rates and act as appropriate.
And I will pass this off to Ayesha Opang, our Director of Business.
Thank you. Before I say anything, I just wanted to acknowledge that Jackie Sansoni is also on, on Zoom as well. As you all know, Jackie Sansoni has been the director of the program for the last few years. And we've really expanded KIA in terms of everything that we're doing right now. As we mentioned last year, we expanded KIA so that every school currently has its own before and after, well, before, its own after-school program. This year, the school year will also have, each school will also have its own before-school program. Jackie has also been instrumental in terms of working with Joanne Bellis to bring back the strings program back into, and it's incorporated as part of the KIA program as well. And even in terms of our pre-K program, when we first started that program, we only had one pre-K classroom. Now we have, we're up to five classrooms this year. And yes, and five very full classrooms. So in terms of the magnitude of the number of kids that we're serving within KIA in Hingham has really grown in terms of, and also the staffing. And throughout that process, Jackie and her staff have been very collaborative and very flexible, very hardworking and have gone above and beyond in terms of everything. Because as you can imagine, with that, that increase in the number of students coming into a program so quickly, there's a lot of change that happens very quickly. And in terms of, she has a great group of not only staff, but her leads as well, who are great support. This year, we also had an assistant director work with Jackie. We hired somebody last year, Kiara Selinger. And she's worked with Jackie throughout the year to help support and build, continue to build the program. One of the things that, so that in terms of the whole program itself, we've seen so much change here, so much growth there. And when, when, when I, today I met with the leads of, from KIA and they are so vested in the development of the program and so vested in terms of the growth and the, and in terms of how strong of a program it is too, and the curriculum and everything else. So I just want to say thank you to Jackie and all the staff. Jackie couldn't be here today, but I know she's here in person and in heart in terms of everything that she's done, right, and on Zoom, right? In terms of everything that she's done together with her staff as well. My kids also benefited from going to KIA. And I know they have made like lifelong friendships from, from that, from this program where sometimes they weren't even in the same classes with the kids that they made, became friends with. And some of the kids have remained friends with them even up until ninth, ninth grade. So I know that they do some great work there. Just want to say thank you. So the two things that we have here are the, the new guidelines for the program. One of the, one of the things that we did this year, together with Mary Ann Foley, who is the HR Director Coordinator, we, instead of having two different documents, in the past, you would have remembered, we had over 20 hours, under 20 hours. We produced one document, which includes both the 20-hour or over and under 20-hour employees. And we've combined them into one document this year, right? So that's one change. So a lot of the red lines that you see in this document really are because of those changes in terms of having one document rather than two documents. The second, other, the two, the three other areas of change that we're looking at in terms of the rates that the leads obtain from, they get a weekly stipend as part of being the leads in the program. So we increased that, the lead amount slightly. And we also increased the rates for both the teachers, assistant teachers. And for the first time this year, we also included the nurses as part of that, as part of the guidelines as well. So wanted to bring that to your attention. In terms of, we did get some feedback from the leads this year. And I think over time, some of the feedback that they've provided to us, we can definitely look, look at it cooperating into the guidelines going forward. But I think it'll take a little time before we can put all their feedback in. I think last year we made some major increases in terms of increasing the number of sick days, vacation days and longevity. So we made some big changes last year. This year, the, the big, the big increases are really in terms of the assistant teacher rates. This year, the, the big, the big increases are really in terms of the assistant teacher rates. Considering that the para rates for the district went up by such a big percentage last year, we tried, we couldn't get up to the same parity with what the district is, is paying because of the cost. And the, and when we look at the income and expenses for the, we weren't able to get up to there. And then how much revenue we're generating for this year, we weren't able to get up to par with the district's assistant teacher rates. But we did make some significant increases in those rates for this year. So we asked for your approval of the guidelines. And we all, another thing that, that Jackie and her team implemented at the beginning of this year and last year, and this year, we actually increased that part of the program is that we also have high school students who come in and get hours within the program. They, it may, and they actually get paid in terms of some of our teach, some of our students who work within the, the family and consumer department. Or sometimes just high schoolers maybe who may be interested in, in, in working with young adults, young students or young, young kids. They come in and they work under the tutelage of Jackie and her staff. So we also have rates included in here for those high school students, and we'd like to get your approval of that as well, too.
Wondering what that was.
Okay, yep.
Does someone have any questions? All right, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the recommended increase pay rates and guidelines for the Kids and Action Program.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Did you have anything else you want to say before I let you go, Jackie?
Thank you for being online tonight.
Is there anything else you want to say that I may have forgotten to say, Jackie? Can you hear me? Okay, I take it as no.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yep, all right, thank you.
All right, so moving on to seven point seven, which is to review the interventionist guidelines and act as appropriate. Great. I first just wanted to say how grateful we are to our interventionists who are such a huge part of our multi-tiered system of support and some of the successes that we've seen in our academic game. So very grateful to that team. So each year, we put forth guidelines with regard to salary and fringe benefits for the terms of their work with Hingham. And so this year, we are proposing to add three holidays to the existing three holidays that our interventionists have. So they currently have Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's, and we propose to add Indigenous Peoples, Veterans, and Memorial Day. And we also are suggesting for their hourly pay rate, we basically did an equity adjustment with a three percent raise on top of that, which is similar to what other our educators received. And so that would result in an hourly pay rate of thirty-nine forty-seven per hour.
All right, does anyone have any questions? And just longevity pay is the same, correct? No change to?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we changed it last year, too.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, Tim?
Um, just looking at the holidays, I know three holidays is a significant increase in paid holidays. But they also don't match the same holidays that the rest of employees get. I'm wondering if we're sort of moving in that direction.
That is the goal. So yeah, so again, the, the three holiday jump was, had a significant budget impact. But that is very much the goal to work towards.
Okay.
All right. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Anyone online? All right, if that's it, then we, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the recommended salary and benefit guidelines for the interventionists and tutors as proposed.
Second. More discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, moving on to seven point eight, which is to discuss the maintenance supervision restructure.
That is for Ayesha.
Okay, thank you. So as part of budget season, you may remember that we discussed a reduction within the maintenance department of one super, maintenance supervisor and to look at restructuring the department. But we hadn't come back to specifics of what that restructuring meant. And we, as part of the, that process, we just want to kind of memorialize. Since we were out of the budget season and some of the changes are being made, we want to just kind of bring it to your attention as well. In terms of that, I think the three main, the two main changes that we've seen is the reallocation of duties between the admin assistant role and supervisor of custodians, where the supervi- the, the admin assistant is taking more of a, of a additional responsibilities. And as part of that, we are, we have been provided, we've provided a stipend for that, for those additional responsibilities that have been taken up. And we've also broadened the duties of the custodial supervisor, where he is also part of the facilities team in general, where he manages different projects. He may at times also manage some of the facility, the maintenance staff as well. So we're broadening, broadening that position to be a supervisor of facilities. And for that particular position, it will be, is a pilot that we're trying out this year. So it'll be really be on an interim basis. It's not a full-time hire. So we will pilot it.
Permanent hire.
It's not a permanent hire, sorry. It will be a pilot over the course of this year. And at the end of the year, we will look at probably posting it and formalizing it as well.
So how will you monitor? How, the effectiveness of it?
Right.
By just monitoring?
So in terms, in terms of that, we're looking at it in terms of, from a facilities perspective overall. We have so many projects that are happening this year between Matt and Ryan O'William, who are the two, the two leaders of the department. And we think that the success, the success of the pilot will really be determined by how successful we are in terms of managing those projects.
Okay.
Because this year, we will have the roof project started. We have the turf happening this year. We also have two RTUs being put in itself. We also have, we're looking at also having the theater at the high school being updated. A lot of those projects, we didn't have all the funding for before. So we've had to patch up capital funding to be able to do that. So we have a many projects happening this year. So we just want to make sure that we have the staffing in place to be able to manage all of those projects. Big projects that have, in addition to the normal small bulb changes and floods.
It'll be a busy year.
Exactly, yes.
Especially thinking parts of foster and the doc might lead into the next fiscal year.
So that, so yeah, so in terms of foster, most of it will be done by the summer. In terms of, when, when, a lot of the work is happening this summer. And hopefully by, by the end of the summer, we should be mostly done. But I think that the closeout of the project will probably happen, will continue until next summer. The majority of it will be completed. In terms of the doc, there have been some delays in terms of HVAC equipment coming in. So in terms of actually having the keys and the occupancy from the planning board, it probably won't happen until July. But I think that it probably will be more than like, it will be ready by September in terms of the doc itself.
And the only thing I would just add is again, when we were in budget season, we explained that we were prioritizing student-facing positions. So this was one of the efficiencies that we proposed in order to save student-facing positions. But we're mindful that the, we run lean. And so didn't want to proceed with a, a formalized and permanent solution on this. We wanted to live with this for a year, see if it's meeting our needs. But again, did make the choice to prioritize student-facing positions.
Any more questions? Audience online, I don't see anyone. All right, I will take a motion.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the proposed maintenance supervision restructuring as recommended by Ayesha Opang, Katie Roberts, and Mary Ann Foley.
Thank you.
Second. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up is to discuss scheduling of the superintendent annual evaluation and process. This is me.
It's like Christmas for the superintendent.
Absolutely, yeah.
Who doesn't want to donate?
I put a little timeline in your packet just to kind of give you the dates. So Katie has graciously let us extend, technically you're supposed to have it done by June thirtieth. Or she's graciously letting us extend it to July twenty-first, three weeks. So she will give us her estimated assessment of artifacts at our next meeting. From there, we will complete our evaluation forms as we did prior years. I think we're, we're all familiar with the process. We've all done this before. With a date to be due to the Chair and Vice Chair by July ninth. That gives you a little over a week and a half. Is that timeline okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
If you have three weeks, you'll take three.
It's at least a weekend and a half. And then.
July fourth, weekend. It's totally fine. It's the right, it's the right.
Just I didn't make it due, just that Monday. And then as our past practice is that the Chair and the Vice Chair will take everyone's evaluations, finalize it, take all the composites, write it up into one report. Michelle and I will get that done, giving ourselves a deadline of July sixteenth so that Katie can have the opportunity to read it prior to us presenting it at the meeting on July twenty-first.
I have a question, Jen.
Yes.
We did change the policy back in twenty twenty-four, and we didn't have anyone who changed seats on the school committee. So that will incorporate incoming, so John and Ness as well.
Yes, so I've already spoken with Ness.
Yep.
So per our policy, she will be doing the evaluation, given that she worked with you during your goals last year. So John will not have to do an evaluation, so he's off the hook.
He'll be hosting the barbecue this year.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, we had said, you know, incoming members will be asked for feedback, so he's going to.
Yep.
Provide feedback, but not the full.
Not the full evaluation.
Gets a break.
Yes. And then I also just put at the bottom, just some links to the overview. If you guys want to just become familiar over it over the next few weeks so that when you are ready to do your evaluation, you are ready to go. And then just one of the things I just want to point out from last year that when we're, when you're doing the indicator rubric, just to be mindful that you're only reviewing her on the specific ones that she picked. Because I remember last year, there was a little bit of confusion with that, because there's only.
I'd have talked about everything.
Yes, you're all, because there, she breaks it down into each certain spokes. They're all, they're all done by letters. I can't remember what they're called at the top of my head.
That makes it easier.
So Katie would have put in two to three indicators per.
Indicators per goal.
Per goal, and then you only evaluate against those.
On those indicators.
It's so much easier.
Yes, yes, yes.
And for anyone who pays attention to this type of thing, that is a collaborative process, as we all know. But collaborative process that we all agree on what the goals will be and what indicators we would use to measure them. So it's not, we get to pick the, it's not that the superintendent gets to pick the two or three things that they're really great at. So, so it is a collaborative process between the committee and the superintendent.
And then we'll get to redo that all over again on August eighteenth. We'll start the goals for next year.
Terrific.
We'll be ready. We just that, so. That's our timeline. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Is there anyone that cannot make the July twenty-first meeting?
I will be away.
Okay.
Let me look.
Twenty-first.
I live my life one day at a time.
I know, it's me too far from that.
No, I, I can, yes, I can, and I will make a note, not to schedule anything.
All right. All right. We don't need to vote on that. So moving on to seven point ten, which is to approve grants and donations. Do we have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Coming tonight, all right. Surplus?
No surplus.
No surplus?
No surplus.
Eight, which is subcommittee and project reports. Matt, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Tim?
Uh, I do. We have, last Monday, we had a, it's a large Human Rights Commission meeting where we had a Know Your Rights presentation by Katie Sutton, among other things. And it was very well-attended and successful and awesome. And I'm also really excited, educational programming, we're doing something weird and different. And sort of the rebooting of the committee with Carrie and John on it. Looking at this as a time, we've had MTSS for really about five years, depending on sort of the fuzzy start of it. But sort of taking, instead of doing the review, the beginning of the year, end of the year, middle of the year data before it's presented to school committee, we are not doing that with the end-of-the-year data. And instead, we're waiting until sort of, and waiting until July tenth to have a meeting to sort of take a bird's eye view of the MTSS system, look at sort of the general trends in data over the past five years, look at where we're going. Especially, we thought that, talking with Erica Pollard, we thought that that would be especially helpful given she's relatively new to the role. We have a new Director of Student Services. We have a new committee member and a new strategic plan, which calls for innovative and responsive teaching. So instructions, so that this is the response, part of the responsive part is the, the MTSS program really is about being responsive to the data. And so really, it sort of fits very well within this meeting because Katie was talking about how that's really sort of the jewel in the crown from the last strategic plan to really take a bird's eye view of that and see where that is heading and what we've learned from that in the past five years. So that'll be a really interesting meeting, I'm hoping.
You get to be surprised with the rest of us when it's presented.
Yeah, it's really just me rebrand, rebrand. It'll be the MTSS Palooza.
Need a Palooza every year.
We need a Palooza every year. But, so I'm looking forward to that. And I think that'll be a really interesting and good meeting to have. It'll be July tenth over, over the summer where we can sort of, everyone can take a step back away from the school year and sort of take a deep breath with us, so.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Ally, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Michelle?
No, uh, School Council for the High School has its last meeting on Wednesday.
I just have.
I'm just thinking about that. I'm like, wait a minute, it's on the calendar. So they can't be up. I wonder why that is still on my calendar.
Okay.
Anyway, I make that, skip that because I don't think we are going to have one.
Can I say one more highlight?
Sure, go ahead.
Just because we are not meeting as an educational program and subcommittee to preview the end-of-the-year MTSS data. That's going to be presented at the next school committee meeting on the thirtieth. So I'd encourage people who are interested in that to tune into the school committee meeting from tonight.
Via Zoom.
Yeah.
Is your meeting audience?
Yeah. What's the thirtieth is Zoom? Oh, you're gonna say that in a second.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna ask you about that.
So just, there are warrants are in the packet. And then, so our next meeting is June thirtieth. We are going to have it via Zoom, just to make things a little bit more.
Summary.
Summary. And then we have Monday, then we have a little bit of a break, Monday, July twenty-first, and then Monday, August eighteenth. Hopefully, we can make it from July twenty-first to August eighteenth. Okay. Um, okay. And then we have. Forty-eight hours, I think we're forty-eight hours, skipped ahead to the meetings, um, just item ten, which is to adjourn to executive session. Not to return to open session.
I will make a motion? Yes. Um, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one, A, three. For the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held on June second, twenty twenty-five. And to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position and the Chair so declares.
I so declare.
Very second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
We need to roll call.
Oh.
Adjourned.
I am just ready to just rewind. Roll call vote, please. Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.